Good evening. I'm going to call this May 9 business meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Dr. Campley. Mr. Dour.
Here.
Mrs. Evans Brockett.
Here.
Mr. Fountain.
Here.
Mr. Keenan.
Here.
Dr. Coler.
Here.
Mrs. Mayers.
Here.
Mr. Saylor.
Here.
Ms. White.
Here.
Thank you. Please join me in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, to continue?
Yep.
Okay. The mission of the Perkerman Valley School District is to cultivate an inclusive community of learners empowered to grow intellectually, socially, and emotionally. Looking for a motion to approve the, excuse me, looking for a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Is there a second?
Is there a second? There's a second?
I just wanted to, yes, I just wanted to clarify for the record that the reason for the amended agenda is that there was a desire to engage in further discussion regarding Agenda Item 4.01, the educational update. And to clarify that, the agenda was amended to indicate that it would be Education Update Part II. There is no official action anticipated, but just to clarify that there would be additional discussion this week, which isn't the typical occurrence for board meetings when an item is discussed at the prior meeting. We just wanted to make that clear through an amendment or amended agenda. And I wanted to state the reasoning for the record before the board voted.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against nay. The ayes have it. Looking for a motion to approve the minutes of April 11th and May 2nd, 2022. Is there a second? There's a second by Mr. Fallon. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against nay. The ayes have it. Mrs. Mayers.
A special recognition, so we're going to walk over to the... If we could have Naveya Riles and Kristin Targna please join us up here. Thank you.
Can we move this a little bit because I don't think the camera can get it. Ryan, will I get out of your way?
Thank you.
Is that okay?
Yeah. That's great. Thank you.
Tonight, we are proud to recognize Perkerman Valley High School alumni Naveya Riles and Kristin Targna for contributing works of art to the permanent collection of artworks in the high school. Naveya and Kristin, thank you for coming forward and thank you for donating your work to the school. Thank you, Mr. Libby, for working with our students and helping them to achieve this excellence. We would like to share with the audience some information about you and your artwork. Naveya graduated from Perkerman Valley in 2020 and is contributing a colored pencil and pastel piece called Black Ripples. This piece was completed during Naveya's junior year of high school before she was accepted into her senior advanced placement art class. The drawing focuses on foreshortening and the use of monochromatic color palette. While pushing for completion, Naveya recalls the challenges she faced in mixing pastel colors with colored pencil, as well as with expanding her knowledge of proportions. She shared that at the time she was willing to accept any challenge as it would only push her creativity to grow stronger. She expressed that pushing on the aspects of blending colors was the challenge she enjoyed the most. After completing this work of art, Naveya continued to create pieces that embody African-American beauty, which in turn helped to develop the unique artistic techniques she employs today. Naveya is currently attending the University of the Arts in Philadelphia and is majoring in fine arts painting. Kristin graduated from Perkerman Valley in 2021 and is contributing a colored pencil drawing entitled Cat. This piece was completed during her time as a senior in PV's Advanced Placement Art Class. The original assignment asked students to draw a portrait, however, Kristin opted instead to draw her cat Scotchey, who she's grown up with for the past 13 years. Kristin created a meaningful and heartfelt dedication to her family pet when completing this piece. The drawing focuses on contrast and dramatic lighting. The portrait of Scotchey is one of the largest color pencil drawings Kristin has created to date. It also continues to be one of her all-time favorites. Kristin is currently attending Cootstown University. Thank you both for contributing such wonderful pieces to our school's collection. The permanent collection was created by the high school building art committee, which provides guidance in upholding the criteria for creating and/or displaying art in the building. It has mapped out public spaces for artwork displays by former students who are pursuing art as a career or who are already established working artists. And thank you again, Mr. Libby, for being with you.
Comments? We'll move into public comments on any topic. Looking on the list, it doesn't look like there are any to offer. Is there any public comment from anyone in the room today? Or on...
None.
None. Okay. We will move on to, let's see, reports, presentations. Special presentation report was given on May 2nd of the last meeting. Student liaison report was also given. Welcome back. Glad you're feeling better. I have no presence report. Do you have any superintendent's report?
I do not.
Do you have a...
No report.
No report from Mr. Subers. 2.06 is the district and committee report. So any members have anything additional to add since Monday? Seeing none, we'll move on to looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda developed on May 2nd, 2022. There is a motion. Is there a second? I have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against nay. The ayes have it. And we'll move on to education. Ms. White.
4.01 is Education Update Part II. There were some additional questions, and Mrs. Smith is available to clarify for us today.
Thank you, Ms. White. And thank you, Board, for the opportunity to just have a few minutes this evening to rediscuss or bring up some of our curriculum guides. I just wanted to start with a brief overview of what our process has looked like. And we have a new course, the Black History course as well. We have three other courses that we have brought forth last month to the board, which we will be seeking approval in June. And our typical process is the writing of that curriculum by teachers led by supervisors in the curriculum department. We do bring that forth to education committee to garner and hopefully receive some feedback and then present to our school board. We are required to have those items on public display then for 30 days so that community members could review and pose any questions they may have or provide feedback. And then we would seek school board approval at the next school board meeting, which in this particular case is in June. So again, just a reminder of what our process looks like. We certainly do look at resources throughout that process as well, and I'll speak to that in terms of one course in particular. I do want to talk just a little bit more tonight about the Black History course. As I mentioned, it is a new course, and of course, anytime you're starting from scratch, there is a lot of work that goes into that and a lot of researching that needs to be done as well. And certainly, you know, we look at that very carefully. The goals of this course are really to discuss how Black Americans have shaped history, as well as how they have been shaped by history. And it does certainly include an exploration of various laws and acts throughout time that have impacted all Americans. But the course really focuses on how they have impacted the Black Americans in particular. And we are looking to provide more diverse experiences for our students. And again, this is one step in that direction as an optional course for our students, either as a social studies elective, sorry, social studies credit or as an elective credit. But as was mentioned, we did receive some questions, whether from committee members or board members, throughout the time since the documents have become public or talked about at committee. Most of them related to the content of the course or the subjectivity or perceived subjectivity of the content. And I just want to clarify, it certainly is our intention to ensure that we are providing an objective curriculum based in fact, and to allow our students to explore that content and come to their own opinions. But I do want to spend just a little time, and then we'll entertain questions about where the content came from because we did have some questions, where did we get the information? So I did bring along, and these will certainly be available for public review if somebody wants to look at them. In our typical process, we do reach out to our typical vendors, the publishers that provide texts for any of our multiple courses. We did receive from both McGraw-Hill and Pearson, as well as Houghton Mifflin-Harcourt, what their resources were. And I have with us this evening the McGraw-Hill, which is From Slavery to Freedom, A History of African-Americans, as well as The African-American Odyssey, which is from Pearson. We also did receive a consumable, which is more like a workbook, from HMH. However, those staff and supervisors that reviewed that content felt that it was not age-appropriate for high school-level course, so we really did not include that in our review or the content in that. They also did rely upon a documentary from PBS, which was African-Americans Many Rivers to Cross. Henry Louis Gates Jr. provided that documentary with PBS. And we certainly converged with other districts along the way as a Black History course is starting to become more common in other districts. And Mrs. Folks certainly reached out to Montgomery County schools. We have landed on one particular resource, which is The African-American Odyssey, as we did a review with a rubric of criteria that this will be the source or resource, the core text that we will be recommending at the June Education Committee and then would also come to the June board meeting for your approval of a resource, as we did with Into Reading and other times that we have resources. So this text, and certainly each of them, were used to reference to receive some of the content for the course. And I'll just point out that this one in particular, and I think both of them do, they do provide a bibliography of where their facts or the content that they have in the book is coming from. So if anybody would like to certainly look at this. Again, when we present these, they are also available for public review. You can just let myself or Mrs. Folks know if anybody in the public or here at the board level would like to see it, and we can arrange a time for that to happen. But I just wanted to give you really a little overview and kind of where the content came from of the course. And Mrs. Folks is here. She is the curriculum supervisor overseeing humanities. And all of the curriculum guides that are being presented to you in May and June fall within her area. She's been pretty busy this year, but she is happy to entertain any questions about content or certainly I can answer any questions about process if there are any.
Thank you. So this is my fifth time as a board member approving curriculum. And I've never seen the number of questions posed to administration that I've seen regarding the Black History course. And given that, I was shocked that there was no public discussion at last week's board meeting. I'm concerned that this board is not going to approve this curriculum next month or that it's going to be changed in such a way that it doesn't accurately reflect what administration has brought to us. So I'd like to bring the questions out of the anonymous padlet and actually have a public discussion. This board talks a lot about transparency. And I think it's important that we are transparent and have these discussions in public because there are 71 students that are signed up for this class currently. Guidance counselors or school counselors are going to be starting to make schedules. And it's hanging out there right now that we're not going to approve this course. So if there are questions that board members have that are keeping them from approving this course next month, I'd like those to be discussed now. I have a real concern that one of the suggestions was that we end the course with Malcolm X and Martin Luther King Jr. I mean, you're leaving out decades of history, so I would really object to a change in the course in that respect. But again, I don't have questions related to the curriculum that was presented. I thought it was a great curriculum. I think our staff have worked really hard. So I was shocked at the number of questions, and I would like there to be public discussion from those that had those questions.
I could just simply add to the comment that we have used a padlet for our education committee and board members in the past, I want to say maybe the past two years, to solicit response. Sometimes there's more questions than there are others. This is again a new course for us. I have no indication that the board is not supportive of that, but we certainly are being reflective of the feedback that we have received. And if we were to recommend any changes, they would still be in alignment with what we as administration believe is appropriate content. And we would let the board know of that prior to the June meeting.
There are no questions. The board is comfortable with the curriculum as presented and intends to approve it next month. Is that, that's what is being presented? That's what I'm seeing as a board member.
I actually did have one question, and this is not about the course as much as it is about the sequence of social studies. From what you had said, there was like 70 some odd students that had signed up for it. A large number of those were seniors. In the past, American government was a required social studies credit, typically taken either as an AP course in the ninth grade or in the 12th grade. Would that course not be then given to those students if they choose this course?
I will ask Mrs. Folks if she wants to come to the podium for some of the questions. However, so she may correct me here. This course, the Black History course, students can opt to have it as an elective, to meet an elective requirement, or it could be one of their four social studies. So yes, a senior could choose if they need their fourth social studies to take Black History in lieu of the AP government, but I will defer if I'm wrong.
That is correct.
So would that then take the place then of the government? Because the government was the one course that social studies always had was required.
So Black History for 10th, 11th, and 12th grade students, as indicated, could be, in fact, their core social studies credit. So yes, it could replace AP Gov.
Thank you for starting the conversation. I posted questions on all the curriculum that was sent out, not just one subject. And I'm glad to hear that there are more questions posed this year than in the past. I'm not sure, this is my first time on the board, if a board member has actually gone through every single page that's sent to them and read it and sent questions. That's what I did. And when I saw on the board memo that there was a padlet to post out, I posted the questions to the padlet. I thought that was our job to post questions about what the curriculum is. I've been happy with the answers that I've received so far. And so I don't have anything more to add in public. I posted my questions online. The whole world has seen it because it was put on social media. So I'm very comfortable with the questions that I personally posted.
I did ask to read the book. I haven't heard back. African Experience?
Oh, yeah. It's over here.
The Odyssey?
The African-American Odyssey.
Odyssey. So I can take that?
So we have one copy. We receive a sample from the vendors when we are looking through them. And so our typical process in the past has been that these are available at the district. You can certainly page through it this evening, but it would be available at the district office and you could reach out to Mrs. Folks or myself to schedule a time to come in to look at that.
And does it have all attachments? Because there are two completely separate things that you get with your subscription. One is the textbook, and then two is the indices with all kinds of additional information. Do you have access to that?
Are you referring to the bibliography that's in here or are you referring to the digital online subscription that would go with this?
The digital online subscription and all the additional materials that are provided to students in conjunction with that book.
We can explore the digital content to see if the vendor will allow us to have a demo account that we could then have you be able to have an opportunity to look at. The content should be the same in the hard copy and in the digital version.
It's true.
No. I mean, well, of the book, yes. But there is additional material that goes along with teaching the course that supports what they're showing you in the book. I don't know what it is. It's hard to get access to it. I mean, you can't unless you're registered to take the course.
Correct. The vendors, you have to pay for subscriptions.
The vendors, you have to pay for subscriptions, so they don't typically allow us to have a, sometimes we can get a demo account to see parts of it.
I can get that. I can't get access to the other materials.
We can investigate a demo account.
I would just like to caution board members to remember where our place comes here. We're not administration. We are not the teachers. We're not supposed to be getting that far in the weeds with curriculum. So I would caution you to go back and look at what your role is as a board member.
Well, here's a question.
When the administration decides to take my name off the curriculum, I'll stop reading it.
Mr. Saylor, I remember you saying that you were going to trust the expertise of the administration.
Correct. My name's not on that. My name's on the curriculum.
And I'm sure that your knowledge of this is much better than theirs.
Absolutely not. That's why I haven't asked for anything to be changed. I just asked questions.
Okay.
If I could get more knowledge.
Perfect.
Go ahead, Mr. Keenan.
I was just curious if anybody knew what the new Civil Rights Act was?
There is none in legislation, in the United States Legislature.
Right. So questions about a curriculum, about things that don't exist? I mean...
I can speak to that.
Please.
What?
I can speak to that.
I've never heard of it, but go ahead.
So it is a term that is used in that particular text. I believe it's also in the other text as well. Again, there were patterns within both commonalities. But the new civil rights term that is being utilized, and I can double-check this, but I believe the reference is referring to the fact that, in the past, with civil rights, as I'm sure we're all picturing, it really was looking at discrimination in terms of intent to discriminate, whereas with the new civil rights, it's referring more so with policy and legislation that is looking at, in terms of the civil rights piece, that perhaps there was not that blatant intent, but things are still disproportionate in terms of who is being affected.
And if that's fictional, and we don't want to teach that stuff to our children, should we not approve the whole course, or can we adjust the curriculum?
We'll get into term in, I believe, both textbooks, so it's not a fictional term.
No, it is. They made it up.
Yeah, but they're not teaching it as a legislative bill that passed. It's being taught as a terminology that's been used mid, I think the book, because I read it, is a little like post 1995, '96 is when that term came out.
So to answer your question, Mr. Keenan, you can certainly make suggestions, provide feedback to us if there's terms or content that you would like us to consider changing, and we will take that into consideration and then share with the board pre the June Board Meeting. Here is our, you know, final revised document, if there are things that we are going to change.
I just wanted to point out that this is being offered as an elective course, so if any family, student, parent isn't comfortable with the material, nobody's asking them to have their student enroll. It's an elective. We have 72 students and maybe some more interested, so, you know, I would hate to tell someone else's family that they shouldn't be learning this if that's what they elect to do.
That's the point that I was going to make, and the only other thing that I was going to add in addition to that is that it's my understanding, especially with high school-level courses, that you, as educators in our buildings and the folks that put the curriculum materials into the educators' hands, are doing so to provide a safe space for learning and growth for all of our kids. So therefore, conceptually, they should be able to have conversation about any terminology that they may encounter in the world, regardless of the subject matter, if you personally agree with it or disagree with it. There's no harm in having a conversation in a safe classroom setting with an adult facilitating that conversation, because sometimes when people find out more information, they actually see the world in a different way and then understand that their experience is maybe not the experience that someone else has had, and then they therefore can empathize with them and understand that, as a human, there are different ways of seeing the world, which is why, as an elective class, if it does replace US, you know, AP Gov. or American Government, this is their experience, and it reflects something that they see as their American experience. So it's not a replacement, in my mind, for an American Government course, because they have had that indoctrination, if you want to use that word, from kindergarten all the way through. So as they're electing to take a course that perhaps gives a different perspective, I think that allowing as much information to be exposed to our children as possible, no matter what the actual terminology, I don't think that anyone would insinuate that our teachers are preaching fiction instead of fact in a history class.
Well, that's why I need to see the book, because, for instance, it says, "Ongoing factors contribute to America's disparities in health care, housing, education, and economics," but it doesn't say what they are. I just need to look at the book to see what they're saying those ongoing factors are. That reparations to the descendants of enslaved people in the United States still discussed in recent times, stirring debate. I'd like to see what the talk is about reparations. At the, it mentions Clarence Thomas was against affirmative action. I'd like to know what the discussion is about that and how political or apolitical that textbook is. If this is a brand-new thing, and the textbook is going to develop our children as critical thinkers on all of these topics, which are all valid topics for discussion, I just need to, I'm worried that it's not. It doesn't appear from the notes that we were presented that it's presenting a critical analysis of a lot of these topics, unfortunately. I don't know what to expect, but the book's over there, and I can take a look at it.
I think, because I've had a chance to look at the book, not at Perkerman Valley, but I think once you look at the book, it'll satisfy a lot of your questions. It's satisfied a lot of my questions. I mean, I was the one who asked a question about how we were going to teach the reasoning that Justice Thomas is against, God bless you, is against affirmative action. I think once you read the book, it'll help. It helped me.
You read that whole textbook?
Most of it, yeah. I read a lot. I don't watch television, except for Seinfeld episodes.
And to clarify what you were talking about a while ago, with the American Government, I know that the sequence of courses, that was the one course of social studies that was required. When we put AP Psychology into the curriculum, it could be taken as an additional course to that in a senior year, but then they'd be taken to social studies. So since the sequence now can be shifted, is that requirement still going to remain that American Government must be taken?
Yeah, like, is there a way to ensure that the seniors all get the class? Like, for the juniors, if they don't get it, they have an opportunity to get it next year. But for the seniors that requested it, is there a way to guarantee that they get the class this year, or, excuse me, next year?
I know from talking to high school administration, they are going to prioritize looking at seniors first.
Yeah, because the juniors can always be told, you know, it doesn't fit in your schedule now, but next year it will. The seniors, there's no...
I wonder if I may, to Mr. Fountain's point, Mrs. Folks, it's my understanding that none of the courses are actually required, but they are a pattern of what our students have taken over the years as they participate and earn their four social studies credits. Is that accurate?
That's correct. I know that in terms of school code, from 7th to 12th grade, you do need four semesters of American history. So from that 7th to 12th grade criteria, I mean, we're certainly hitting that requirement. And of course, Black History would count as American history as well.
Right. And it also meets the requirement of earning four social studies credits...
Correct.
...to earn a diploma from Perkerman Valley High School. But technically, none of them are actually required courses, so...
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mrs. Folks.
All right.
Thank you.
Oh, I got locked out.
4.02, it was the enrollment report presented on May 2nd. I'm assuming there's no changes or updates, Mrs. Smith?
No, there is not.
3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8 are all on consent, and that ends the education section.
Thank you. Mrs. Mayor's business?
Thank you. 5.01, the finance update was posted, given on May 2nd. Also, 5.02, May 2nd, the report was discussed. 5.03, 4, 5, 6 are on consent. 5.07, the action was already taken. 5.08, 9, and 10 are on consent. 5.11, it's a motion to approve Windview Athletic Fields to repair four athletic fields at Middle School West at a total cost not to exceed $36,000, and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second.
Questions?
Yes, I do. At the last meeting, we asked if they were looking into secondary vendors. I'm curious to see what the secondary vendor said. I know they did report that Red Dry would be put in. I know Dr. Kolar also had a question. This was the same vendor that put up the fields before, so I'm just curious if the administration can provide a little bit more information on why this vendor and this bid is the bid that we should all be voting on. I know today, Perkerman Valley High School softball field was being rented by an organization, and that field had trenches put in the field and water all over it. It wasn't able to be used, so I just want to make sure that when the school spends $36,000 on dirt and sand, that it's the best dirt and sand that we can get done.
So, yes, we have. We have, Mr. Fabrizio has reached out to additional vendors for additional work. It is our understanding from the meeting last week that we were also supposed to add the softball field to this process, which we're working on a quote. So I would encourage the school board to table this, and then we'll bring it back in June. We can actually talk about it in the Safety and Operations Committee coming up on the 19th. That is our hope, but we are working on a softball field quote as well. But Mr. Fabrizio is doing some pretty good work. This is not the same vendor that did the previous work, so we do have two vendors. We're working on a third as well overall, so we're working to address the concerns of the board overall.
Okay, thank you. So can we table this motion, please?
We should have a motion to table, a second, and a vote.
Okay.
Well, hold on. Let me interject. If you're going to add to the softball and potentially change the vendor, that's not really a table, because it's a totally separate motion. So maybe we should just...
You can vote it down if you want.
Vote it down and wait.
Just redirect the administration to further investigate the project.
Yeah.
We directed them to further investigate the project.
And it's not to the satisfaction, is that the case?
I, what we have is a motion to approve the contract as presented and the project as presented. So how you want, you could table it, you can vote it down.
Just to Ms. White's question, administration just doesn't have all the information it would like to be able to provide the board, which is why the suggestion that maybe we hold off on taking any action on this item. We'd also like to explore the high school softball field because of its lack of drainage, so some serious issues there. That'll be a separate quote, or we can combine it, and the board can then consider the action it might take with both the West Fields and then the High School Varsity softball field.
So I would...
So currently, we have a motion and a second. We're going to take a vote on it.
Okay.
So all against, say against.
Against.
No.
All four say aye. The againsts have it, or no? And now this allows the administration to come back with another motion in June.
5.12, the motion is to approve the Student All Sports Insurance Program for the 2022, 2023, I think that needs to be changed, school year, with Axis Insurance Company as planned by CBIZ Benefits and Insurance Services at a total cost to the district of $10,047. An I so move.
Second.
Any questions?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Yep.
Aye.
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 5.13, 14, and 15 are all on consent, and that ends my section.
Thank you very much. Mr. Dorr?
Thank you. 6.01, it's a motion to ratify the payment of bills and payroll as per the list submitted for the period ending April 30th, 2022, and authorize the payment of bills on the check and voucher registry submitted for May. An I so move.
Is there a second?
Aye.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, nay.
The ayes have it.
6.02, it's a motion to approve the Treasuries Report and Financial Statements, including summary of cash and investment accounts as prepared by administration for the period ending April 30th, 2022. An I so move.
Is there a second? Hearing one from Mr. Fountain. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, nay. All the ayes have it.
Ends my section.
Thank you very much. Ms. Evans-Brockett?
Section 7, Professional Personnel. Items 7.01 through 7.06 are all on consent. Item 7.07, the recommended action is to approve Act 93 salary adjustments for four administrators for the 2021-22 school year retroactive to July 1st, 2021. An I so move.
Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, nay. The ayes have it.
No action on 708.
Thank you very much. Mr. Keenan, support personnel?
Section 8, 8.01 through 8.05, we're all on consent. That ends the section.
Thank you very much. Dr. Kolar?
Section 9, Governance, 9.01. We had a first reading on the following policies, 218, 220, 227, 237, and 808. So if there are no questions or comments, we can move those to second reading. And then items 9.02, 3, 4, 5, and 6 are all on consent, so that concludes Section 9.
Thank you very much. Move on to closing items. Any comments from the audience? In person, on Zoom? Seeing none? Comments from board members? Ms. Evans-Brockett?
Yes, thank you. I want to express my frustration with the process of trying to get items added to the agenda. I made a request on Friday to add a discussion item, and it took over a dozen emails back and forth, phone calls, texts, until 10:30 this morning before it was finally added, so that we had to do an amended agenda. This is my third request for an agenda add in the five months since we've been a new board. The first two requests went unanswered, so it's frustrating to me that we sit here as a board and continue to talk about working as a team of 10, yet any of the minority members that make a request for an agenda add go unanswered or simply are told no. So if we want to continue to say that we're going to work as a team of 10, I would like for us to actually work as a team of 10. Thank you.
Dr. Kolar?
I just wanted to say thank you to Mrs. Smith and Mrs. Folks for the thorough job you did answering a lot of the questions. I saw the questions posted online about the curriculum, and I thought you did a fabulous job answering the questions, and I really think that it's amazing we're offering this, hopefully, Black History course to our students. I think it's moving our district in the right direction, and I really hope that people are comfortable with the answers you provided, as I was, and that we can move forward with this.
Fountain? Ms. White? Mr. Dorr? Mr. Keenan?
No comments.
Ms. Mayor's?
No, thank you.
I have none either. I will, though, read the Notice of Video Recording Disclaimer. I won't read it, but I'll tell you to read it yourself. It's a lot of fun, and we are going to, moving to a German, I'll rule German, just let everyone...
Executive session?
Yeah, absolutely. Just to let everyone know, we had an executive session today... I won't read it, but I'll tell you to read it yourself. It's a lot of fun. And we are going to, moving to a German, I'll rule German. Just let everyone...
Executive session?
Yeah. Just to let everyone know, we had an executive session today at 6:20